Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Del Brazil.
Present.
Michael Feller. Victor Garza.
Yes.
James Mulkey.
Here.
John Massingill.
Here.
Steve Bryant. Mr. Vice President, we have a quorum.
Thank you much, very much, Ms. Barrientos. Item number two. Player and pledge, Mr. Toscano, who do we have doing the player and pledge tonight?
Well, we have some amazing students who all shook my hand, looked me in the eye, and introduced themselves to me earlier. And their principal, Ms. Worsbach, from Pecan Valley Elementary School. Ms. Worsbach?
You.
Wow, very good.
So, good evening, members of the board, and Mr. Toscano, I am very excited to present to you some wonderful students from Pecan Valley. And our first students today is going to be Raylan Gonzalez, who is going to be reading our prayer. And that's going to be followed by the pledge by Eustine and Riley Mintz, and then Raylan as well. And so, we'll go ahead and get started.
Dear Jesus, we come to you with thanks and praise for all the blessings you have given us. We, you are such a loving God. We ask that you continue to bless all the families of East Central ISD. We and the employees of East Central ISD with success in ed- education and to being outstanding members of our community. Please continue to guide and bless our board members with wisdom and unity in Jesus' name and men.
Amen.
Can I have everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Ladies, place the flag. Briseas, place the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. From now on, we are America, and our mother, and our representative, one nation under God, under the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas.
One nation, under God, one and indivisible. On God, on earth, to the heavens, and to the heavens, to thee, Jesus. Unisono ante Dios, unisona in visibilis. Let's take one.
We're very routine at Pecan Valley. Thank you, you can have a seat. We're throwing them off in the beginning, and then they're keeping us going in the end. All right, at this time, I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to Ms. Reed. Ms. Reed has been working very diligently with our students for this performance. So, now for Ms. Reed.
Thank you all so much for bringing your children. I know it's out of your regular routine, and I really appreciate it. I would like to introduce to you from Mr. De La Rosa's class, these are all of our first graders, Isabella Baraza, Kinley Berner, Sophia Contreras, Adely Hernandez, Yaniel Ramos Ruiz, Briseas Regalado, Emily Reyes. From Ms. Leap's class, we have Sophia Gonzalez, Raylan Mintz, and Brooklyn Tapia. So, we are going to sing to you three patriotic songs a cappella.
There were no more to wisdom than there were a million. Yankee doodle, keep it up, Yankee doodle dandy. Mind the music and the stuff, and with the girls be handy.
Very good.
God bless America, where that I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the night with the light from above. Through the mountains, through the prairies, through the oceans like the flow. God bless America, my home sweet home. God bless America, my home sweet home. God bless America, where that I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the night with the light from above. From the mountains, through the prairies, through the oceans like the flow. God bless America, my home sweet home. God bless America, my home sweet home. You're a grand old flag, you're a high-flying flag, and forever in peace may you wave. You're the land I love, the land I love, the home of the free and the brave. Every heart beats true for the red, white, and blue, and there's never a false or brand. Should all the greats and thieves be forgot, keep your eye on the grand old flag. You're a grand old flag, you're a high-flying flag, and forever in peace may you wave. You're the land I love, the land I love, the home of the free and the brave. Every heart beats true for the red, white, and blue, and there's never a false or brand. Should all the greats and thieves be forgot, keep your eye on the grand old flag.
So, I want to thank Ms. Reed and definitely our students, who did a fantastic job. So, thank you for working with them. I'd also like to recognize any family members of our students. If you'd please stand, because we know you play a huge part in their education as well. Come on, parents. So, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very nice.
Before we move on to item number three, I would like to thank Ms. Worsbach and Ms. Reed as well, and the exceptional students from Pecan Valley Elementary. Next on the agenda is awards and recognitions. I would like everybody to stay so we can participate in this process as well. Actually, you want to discuss that here?
Let them know we've got a couple of awards for a few minutes, and then you'll do it. Let them know we've got a couple of awards, and then we'll have a recess.
Yeah, item three, we have awards and recognition. So, if everybody would stay until we get done with that, and then we'll take a short break. Mr. Toscano?
Sir, Mr. Massingill trustees, we've got some employees with us this evening that we would like to recognize for embodying a few of the values that we have here in the district. Tonight, we'll be recognizing employees who have exhibited fiscal responsibility, personal accountability, persistence, customer service, and loyalty. Ms. Colas?
Thank you. Good evening, family and friends. Tonight, the first person that we will be recognizing is Ms. Josie Torres. Will you please come forward, Ms. Torres? Ms. Torres is a custodian at East Central High School, and she was nominated by Mr. Weaver, one of the assistant principals, and signed off on by Mr. McKay. And what they had to say about her is that Josie is the hardest-working custodian that they've ever met in twenty-six years in education. She comes to work every morning with a smile and greets everyone she sees. She does her job with a tremendous pride in a servant's heart. They love to see her every day, and she motivates everyone to do their very best every single day. So, thank you, Ms. Torres. We appreciate you very much. Her husband? Yes. Congratulations, Ms. Torres's family. Next, we would like to recognize Ms. Carmen Nunez for her personal accountability. Ms. Nunez is a custodian at Legacy Middle School, and she was nominated by Ms. Lewis, the principal. And they would like to recognize Ms. Nunez, or Ms., yes, Ms. Nunez, for being a dedicated employee to Legacy for many years, and Salado prior to that. This year, they have literally watched her run back and forth to ensure that spills are clean, the cafeteria trash cans are emptied, and that all requests across the campus are fulfilled. She can be seen in the hallways, helping to clear hallways during passing period. We had a situation about a month ago where a student walked away from campus, and she walked after them, called for administrators, kept line of sight to make sure that the student was safe, and kept visibility with the student until the administrators could get there. So, that was extremely helpful. So, thank you, Ms. Nunez. Is your family here with you tonight? If you're Ms. Nunez's family, please stand up and be recognized. Thank you for being with us tonight. Next, we'd like to call up Ms. Erica Hernandez. She is a pre-K teacher at ECDC. Ms. Hernandez is being recognized for fiscal responsibility. She was nominated by Mr. Trainer, the principal there. And in light of our new pre-K programming, we were in need of outdoor learning spaces. Ms. Hernandez has gone out of her way to seek donations on her own time from places like Lowe's and Home Depot and different vendors to ensure that we can get all of the things that we need for our learning spaces outdoors. So, we appreciate you very much for doing that on your time. So, thank you, Ms. Hernandez. And I believe her family is also here with her. Family, thank you for being here. Next, we're going to recognize Ms. Paige Pionzik from Legacy Middle School. Ms. Pionzik is being recognized for persistence. She was nominated by Ms. Graber and signed off on by Ms. Lewis from Legacy. Paige Pionzik models the exceptional performance of persistence. In spite of obstacles and opposition, Ms. Pionzik is exceptional at sticking to and teaching high academic and behavioral expectations. She is known to hold strong and doesn't accept anything but the best from her students as far as their academic effort and their behavior. Ms. Pionzik's peers are amazed at her flawless ability to maintain a classroom with sound procedures and exceptional culture. When you walk into her classroom, students are self-managing and want to please their teacher. No matter the student or the day that the student is having, they know that Ms. Pionzik's class is a safe place. Ms. Pionzik offers her classroom for peer observations and debriefs with peers about her successes and failures. She's transparent with her previous struggles, but positively builds peers with experiences and solutions. She models persistence on a daily basis with her students and her fellow teachers. She is a foundational pillar at Legacy Middle School. Congratulations, Ms. Pionzik. And I know her family is here. Stand up. It's her family, mom and dad. It is with great honor that we recognize Ms. Gail Pionzik, academic dean from East Central High School. Ms. Pionzik was nominated by Mr. McKay, principal at East Central High School, for embodying the value of loyalty and personal accountability. Gail has been a dedicated and committed EC family member for over a decade. She's had a significant impact on the lives of our students, staff, parents, and the greater EC community. Her genuine love, care, and compassion for others are an example of her servant leadership and devotion to improving the lives of others. Additionally, she models personal accountability by totally immersing herself into any task at hand and relentlessly pursuing excellence. Furthermore, Gail practices with integrity by being thorough with a strong eye for attention to detail. As a leader, Gail Pionzik has guided, coached, led, and supported numerous teachers to be the best versions of themselves and never settles for mediocrity. Her loyalty to family, school, district, and community runs deep. She has been a devoted member of our district and has worked behind the scenes to improve East Central High School and East Central ISD. Gail Pionzik is a force multiplier who has been an inspiration to us all. As she prepares for the next phase of her life after her retirement this year, it is important for her to know that she has left an incredible mark on our school and the district and will be greatly missed. Gail, thank you for your loyal service and the personal accountability that you've demonstrated. You are a true difference-maker in the lives of others. We love you. Any family is, where is everyone? I know it's stock show season, so they're all...
They're winning a contest right now.
They're winning a contest. But there are lots of supporters out there. I see them. Thank you very much.
Like I've always said, we have the best of the best when it comes to employees and staff in this district. So, we have everything to be proud of. Let's take a short ten-minute recess, and we will reconvene at about seven o'clock. Thank you.
I would also like to comment on that event that happened yesterday, that tragedy. It's not a event, it's a tragedy that happened yesterday. I think in these day and times, I think everybody just needs to look to their right shoulder, their left shoulder, and make sure that we take care of everybody. We're all in this same boat, and we're all in this together, and we need to watch out for everybody's backs. And we see something, say something, you know, the cliche. But I think we just need to start really paying attention nowadays and make sure that, you know, we observe and do something instead of just sitting on our hands and watching life go by. That's about all I have to say on that subject, but does anybody else have anything to say? All right, it is now right at seven o'clock. We'll call the meeting back to order. Item, agenda, agenda item four, public comments. We have, I think, what, five people to speak? So, per board policy, the ED local, other than providing statements of fact to the board, we will not comment, deliberate, or take any action regarding any comments presented tonight as they are not included as part of the posted agenda for our meeting. As presiding officer this evening, I am asking for all comments to be kept within five minutes. So, please, Ruth Medeline?
Thank you so much for having us here. Ruth Medeline, I, we reside at forty-six eighteen...
Please speak to the board.
Oh, I'm sorry. Residents at forty-six eighteen Pecan Grove in Pecan Valley. First of all, I want to say we're a family of people rooted at East Central. My daughter was one of the first students that inherited, and was honeyed a hornet from two thousand to two thousand and three, so, girl hornet. So, we have a lot of pride here. But where my concern, I have some questions for the board to consider for future planning of our neighborhood is that now, as we're back in the neighborhood and in living in a combined household with a four-year-old granddaughter, we do have some opportunities in the future that look like the neighborhood is going to be developed and bringing in additional, let's say, fifteen hundred residents to the community. How is that going to impact, I'm saying especially, our elementary school system and then feeding into the middle school and of course to the high school? With that many new residents coming into the community, understanding the size of the property that Pecan Valley Elementary sits on, as well as the budget for not just faculty but staff, and the curriculum that it's going to take for bringing in the number of potentially new students to our neighborhood, along with the middle schools and the high schools, the transportation, for those that need to have to be bused, as well as the pedestrian traffic. Growth is a great opportunity, but it also comes with some challenges in understanding that where we reside in our community, that's our one elementary school. So, I'm sure that the board's probably looking at these considerations, and if not just yet, looking at them futuristically and trying to have a full understanding of what the future holds for the district specifically with this potential growth.
Next, we have Tommy Cabazos.
Good evening. I'm ill-prepared, so excuse me, this will be short. But I too went to East Central. I went to Pecan Valley Elementary, Salado Middle School, graduated from East Central High School, joined Texas DPS, promoted to the valley twice, and I came back home and moved back to my old district. So, my roots, you know, I came back home. And the new Valor Club development that's coming up, I have to say that I'm not for it. I bought my house because of the serenity of my backyard. It sits on what was the old Pecan Valley Golf Course, which I know has died off, but it's still a very beautiful and peaceful place. And for this new development to come in, they're talking shopping centers and homes that are going to have a three-to-five-year maximum tenant lease. You can only know what kind of people that's going to bring in. Yes, they're talking ex-military, but if you're going to have a home lease that's only three years old, how well are you going to take care of the house? And how well are you going to respect your homeowner? I live on Pecan Grove Street. It's a very quiet, very neighborly area. It's something out of a TV show. It's surreal. Unfortunately, I think with this development coming up, you're probably going to see people like myself pull up stakes and go live elsewhere. I'd like to stay in East Central District, but I can't have a fifteen-hundred housing unit development grow up in my backyard. I'm forty-two years old, I just got married, and my firstborn is due May sixteenth. And looking at that in the future, I don't know how well I'm going to stay home where my roots are. So, thank you for the time. Like I said, I'm ill-prepared. I thought this was more of a Q and A. This is my first time addressing a board like this, but thank you.
Okay, next we have Debbie Sebers.
Thank you very much. Just something that came up with my own family yesterday. My daughter had a legitimate reason, my adult daughter, had a legitimate reason for going on the high school campus. She wandered around for quite some time looking for a specific office, addressed two custodians that she knew were custodians, and two people that she said were dressed as if they might be administrators. No one ever stopped her. No one, in a kindly manner, offered help, guided her to the office she was looking for, but more importantly, no one stopped her. I know the challenges we have with the state high school campus, as open as it is, keeping it a closed campus. I'm just hoping that perhaps we're all aware of that, and sure we are. Perhaps we're addressing it in some way, putting together some kind of safety committee, some kind of safety training for our personnel. Like you said, just to keep your eyes open, understand that my daughter is playing, and she is cute as a bug, and she's thirty-five, and she could probably pass for a high school student, but she clearly had no business in that. So, that is the comment that I wanted to make, and hopefully, we are making strides to make that as close to campus as it can be. I'm totally guilty of parking in the side parking lot and running in to give my son something real quick without going to the main office, because it takes way too much time for me to do that process. Perhaps we can think of something else, and I would appreciate that.
Next, we either have Dan Pedrati or George Block.
Mr. President, members of the board. Mr. Superintendent, my name is Dan Pedrati. I am, I believe, delighted to be here tonight, is the best word for it. We're hopefully, as we come to terms with some of the needs and concerns of our neighbors, moving the Valor Club project forward after almost six years of work and effort. The part I'm particularly proud of is how much emphasis we have within the plan and the intent of the project for recreation and sports, and particularly opportunities for children. This is, some of you may have heard from back when, the first couple of times I've talked to folks down here, that we're putting a golf course back. We have a very comprehensive practice and teaching facility as a major part of that golf course. We are going to partner with the First Tee of San Antonio, which is all about kids and introducing them to life values through the game of golf. We have been planning for a long time what we call the Valor Dome, which is an indoor sports arena that will emphasize Olympic training, and we've actually talked to the United States Olympic Committee about it. Olympic training, and particularly Paralympic training, as something that we can bring to the southeast side of San Antonio. Others of you may know me from the Republic Golf Club. I've been doing business down here for many, many, many years, and we work with the East Central School District and the golf team in particular, and are very proud to host your annual fundraising tournaments and such. And within our array of sports and recreation, it was, in fact, inspired by the kids, not only the kids that are going to come to the Valor Club, but also the kids in the neighborhood. The kids that we bring, so to speak, with the Valor Club development are the children of veteran families, and those kids, we know... of veteran families and those kids, we know from the time we've spent with the families, want nothing more than what to get to normal, what's, whatever normal is. They wanna get to know kids that didn't grow up in the same circumstance and figure out how to go forward from there. We think honestly that sports and recreation and the outdoor activities that are a centerpiece of our project is the, is the best foundation to build that, that, uh, those relationships and those friendships on. Um, the golf, the entire project has residential, uh, has a significant amount of residential, it has commercial. Uh, the good news is, and I perhaps should've said this in the beginning, when I first talked to anybody from East Central Eastern School District years ago, this was all the nonprofit effort. Um, I can tell you that the nonprofit owns none of this at this point in time. We forged a partnership with a for-profit business so that the, that the idea of tax avoidance and hiding behind a nonprofit as the owner of this property and trying to avoid property tax payments is no longer part of the plan. Uh, the, the nonprofit now will handle programming, activities, and the management of the sports facilities and such on the property, but not an owner, not as an owner. So, this project, which is in excess of two hundred million dollars in its greatest fashion, is gonna be a corporate taxpayer and I think in the long term, a tremendous benefit both financially as well as sort of philosophically to the area. That's our intent and that's our, that's what we're committed to. I really appreciate y'all's time and appreciate you.
Board members, uh, I think Dan brought me as his swimming guy. Um, I've been part of the Valor Club since I was, uh, CEO at Haven for Hope and they brought that project to me then because, uh, families of, uh, wounded warriors were one group we couldn't say grace over. Became part of this wearing my San Antonio sports hat and especially my USA Swimming hat. I coached swimming in San Antonio for thirty-six years and I've known that there's been a void in this corner of town for thirty-six years. And, uh, I just wanna commit to you that we'll bring all the resources of USA Swimming to build the very best natatorium we can build for both the residents of the Valor Club and the East Central community. Thank you, thank you. Next, we have James Griffin.
Hi, good evening, James Griffin, I'm part of the Valor Club team as well and, and I'm the last one here, so I just won't go, uh, on all night. I really appreciate y'all's time. Uh, you've heard a little bit about the, uh, project tonight. Uh, I'm, I'm sure you've heard, uh, pieces, uh, of information previously and, and we'd like to leave some information with you as well, uh, to kinda go over the various project details and, and really all the, all the benefits and coordination between the school district and this project that can occur in the future. Uh, what I'd like to cover briefly, uh, we are, uh, the, in the process of rezoning, um, the majority of the property, uh, everything but the golf course itself, the golf courts, uh, will be built first, uh, we're proposing to rezone, kinda everything around it, and that is the next critical step, uh, in, uh, in this process, uh, towards the Valor Club project. Right now, the property, uh, pretty much, uh, all of what we're rezoning, close to a hundred and ten acres, is all zoned in that thirty-three right now, so it's zoned for apartments, so a lot of apartments and nothing but apartments. Um, almost thirty-six hundred units is what it's zoned for today. Uh, we're proposing to rezone it to a mixed-use district to allow for the Valor Club project, uh, allows for those mixed uses that, that Dan and, and George mentioned, uh, the recreation, the retail, the veteran services, uh, all those, uh, critical components that, uh, will be part of the Valor Club and then that will be, uh, also available, uh, to the community, to the students, uh, and others, uh, the golf, the swimming, uh, all of those items. Uh, we are here, uh, to, um, ask for, uh, your support of the rezoning, um, that will, uh, allow for this project, which again, uh, we believe greatly benefits, uh, everyone in the area. We, we are working closely with neighborhood associations, we've had several meetings, have another one tomorrow night, um, uh, we're working closely with them to discuss this project and, uh, already made some initial project changes, uh, based on, uh, some of those discussions. Uh, we're also here, we'd like to, uh, propose, uh, to enter into restrictive covenants in favor of the school district, uh, given the proximity to Pecan Valley Elementary School and the fact that this is, you know, a two-hundred acre project, uh, within the school district, uh, we would like to propose, uh, restrictive covenants, uh, again, in favor of the school district that would, uh, essentially, uh, bind the property and guarantee that, uh, all these project components that, that we are discussing and talking about and, and plan, uh, actually occur. Uh, for example, the, the golf coming first, the, uh, number of residential units proposed, this type of residential, we, we paid, uh, close attention to the homes along Pecan Grove and although it is zoned multifamily right up to their property lines now, uh, we have what's, uh, what we're calling a single-family buffer area along that area to, uh, be really consistent, compatible, uh, and, and, and buffer, uh, those homes, um, with our project to a single-family area. Uh, I can go on and on on those restrictions, but, but I won't bore y'all with that tonight, but we would like to propose that, uh, so we can, uh, have the, these items binding on the property, um, you know, in the future, uh, to help, you know, protect the school district and, and protect the community and, and really just, um, you know, show that, uh, we are doing what, uh, what we say we are going to do. So, uh, again, I, um, I know our, our time is brief and y'all still have a full agenda, uh, so I won't go on, but I would like to leave some information with y'all. Uh, my contact's on here, if y'all have any questions for us regarding the project, the rezoning process, or anything else, we are more than happy to, to answer those questions and, and have that discussion now and, and in the future. So, um, again, really appreciate y'all's time and I, I thank y'all very much.
Next, we have Tony Morehouse.
Hi there, my name's Tony Morehouse and I'm gonna turn around and talk to you. Um, you may regret it, but anyway, I just want to recognize the group that's here or some of them from our association, so if y'all would please stand. And, and let me explain, this is just a few of them. The other night at our meeting, we had over a hundred people there. There were, there was not one individual that was in favor of this. I mean, we didn't have a yes or no area to mark whether they were for or against, but after the meeting, we, I had phone calls and even through the meeting, we took minutes, y'all have copies of those, and, um, people are just not overjoyed about this. Now, this may sound like the best thing since sliced bread and this is not in disrespect of veterans or anyone like that, but, but we have been going through this for four years already. Always the veterans are mentioned. The Masters Ranch Apartments over there at Pecan Valley in East South Cross, they, they were billed as veterans. They are not. There might be maybe one or two. Every time I ask, I, I, I don't really get a solid answer. Along with that apartment complex, they were supposed to have had a golf course, okay? And all these other amenities. Did it ever happen? No. So now, we have the same song, but a different verse. And we love our neighborhood. We wanna protect the character and personality of our neighborhood. When they, and, and believe me, James is a good guy, you know? I've enjoyed working with him, but some of the members that could not be here, either because of sickness or being in the hospital with heart problems or whatever, they said they just cannot see anyone putting two hundred and fifty million dollars in that area for what they say they're going to be doing. And they would appreciate if people would stop using the vets as part of the presentation because that was used so many times before. And I've discussed this with James already, the attorney that was just here. There is a five-letter word and it's called, it's spelled G R U S T. And what was told before never happened and so people are a little bit skittish of this proposed development. But, um, regardless, they've asked or mentioned to me that they want the apartment buildings to be four stories high. There, there is no way that those apartment buildings and that landscape should be four stories high. It will ruin the whole view of the valley, number one. And number two, why do they have to? So I asked James about it and he said, "Well, we could bring them down, but it would take more, it would take up more land mass." So, you know, I think that we want our neighborhood to look as welcoming as possible and having four-story apartment buildings staring you in the face when you drive over the bridge is not that welcoming. Then, another thing is that, uh, another individual said, "Tony, when you get up there..."
You have one minute.
"...mention to them that apartments take away from the values of the home. Regardless of how you say it, where you put them, the apartments, any apartments usually take away from the values of the home." And then we were asking who is on the board of directors. We were never told who was on the board of directors. We wanna make sure that this is substantiated and if they are going to be making changes to our area, that they actually follow through. Now, we were able to work with them on some things and, and I think you, do they have this letter that you sent? Okay, I will provide one for y'all tonight so you can include it in whatever paperwork you need to include it. But, these are all the answers to our request, which include FEMA, SARAH, TCEQ, Texas Insurance Agency, among others.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, let's move on to agenda item five, Superintendent's report. Mr. Descano, what do you have for us tonight?
First of all, trustees, this month's personnel report can be found on page nine in your electronic packet. Um, recommend that you take a glance at that, there may be, uh, a couple of pieces of information in there that you may be interested in. Uh, if so, as usual, please, uh, do not hesitate, uh, to reach back out to me and I will provide any additional information, uh, that you might need. Additionally, in your miscellaneous packet, uh, you'll find vantage points, as you do each and every time we get a policy update from Tasby. This is update one-ten, um, it's definitely much shorter than one-oh-nine, um, but speaks specifically to, uh, board-related, uh, policies, particularly, um, those related to board member eligibility, qualifications, uh, board elections, as well as filling of board vacancies. Um, this month will be the first reading of update one-ten, so as is always the case, between now and next month's regularly scheduled meeting, if you would, uh, take a look at it, uh, included in your electronic packet, um, from page eleven through seventy-four, you see all of the policy recommendations, um, as well as an electronic copy of the vantage points that you have there. If you have any questions or need additional information about those policies that are being recommended, uh, for consideration in one-ten, again, please don't hesitate to contact my office. Uh, we'll be bringing this back to you next month for consideration and possible approval. Uh, also moving on, uh, this month's construction update, Mr. Selby will provide for you at this time. Tonight, I'm gonna give you a brief update to the, the bond program and where we're at and, and how it's looking. Uh, as you know, we've been, uh, uh, going through, we'll start off with Tradition Elementary School. Uh, this is, uh, the new elementary school, as you know, out in the St. Hedberg area, FM thirteen forty-six and FM fifteen eighteen. Uh, back in January, you can see that it had begun to take shape and actually started looking like, uh, buildings. And now in February, it's looking a little bit better. Uh, I also realize it's one of the worst pictures you could, that I've given you so far, so I decided to give you a little bit more detail this time on those. And I mentioned last time how the contractor had broken those up into four sections, A, B, C, and D. Uh, you can see that, uh, section A is the gym and cafeteria, uh, that is dried in, uh, now, meaning that it is, uh, uh, where water won't be coming in there, they're able to start doing interior walls and so forth, and so that's moving along very well. Uh, and right now, it would look like that they would be completed with that, uh, section by around the first of June. And then you have B, which is, uh, really the front entrance, admin area, and, and behind that is the, uh, uh, areas that would include the, uh, the library and so forth. Uh, B is gonna be, uh, uh, dried in by the beginning of March, uh, timeframe and could be also delivered to us around the first of June, according to the contractor. Section C is going to be the, uh, uh, area to the right, uh, and if you're looking at the building from the, the front, and that'll be your kinder first-grade wing. Uh, as you can see, uh, section C is probably the least, uh, advanced as far as construction, but is moving fairly quickly. Uh, they anticipate getting dried in somewhere in, by the end of March is what I would anticipate and, uh, would be completed somewhere around the, uh, the, toward the end of June. And then, uh, wing D is the two-story, uh, second through fifth grade wing and you can see it is dried in, most of it, uh, and you can see some of the masonry going up, the exterior masonry, and it's going to begin to have the metal panels that will also go on the outside going up any time. I, I talked about being dried in, that's just significant because once you dry in the building, you can start doing a lot more interior work that you can't do, uh, when water can penetrate the building. And so, for example, you can start putting up sheet rock or you can start putting in additional electrical, uh, finish out and so forth. The PAC or the Gary Patterson Center for the Performing Arts at the high school, uh, in January, you could see that a lot of the steel was going up and beginning to, to take shape. Uh, by, uh, February, you can see that not only is the steel up, mo- most of the steel is up, they're starting to put exterior walls up as well as decking on the roof and that's, that's significant. Um, also towards the back, uh, the south side, that is just across from the current band hall, they are putting up, not only is the waterproofing undone on the exterior wall, but also they're putting up the masonry, uh, exterior. And then from the east, driving by, you would see, uh, uh, what you have here on, on the right picture frame. We're anticipating for that, uh, PAC to be dried in by, uh, towards the end of March, which is significant, uh, uh, timeframe and, uh, completion somewhere towards the middle or, or I would say the end of July. Uh, we're still working very diligently with the Guido Brothers, uh, construction folks, uh, through various inspections by the Architect LPA and all the consultants. We have on board A G C N, uh, who also does, uh, daily site visits and inspections, our own staff visits to the site, uh, throughout each week. Uh, we have bi-weekly meetings with, uh, the Guido folks and, and continue to monitor what's happening. So, right now, they're moving forward very well, uh, and, um, I think that we have a very good opportunity to complete this project within the timeframe of year. So right now, they're moving forward very well, uh, and, um, I think that we have a very good opportunity to complete the project within the timeframe of June. Uh, Solado, uh, once again, you, you, last month, you could see where steel was going up on the north addition as well as the south. And now this month, they've already started putting up exterior wall, uh, walls and beginning to do the, the roof as well. Uh, same way on the south side, uh, just basically a steel frame, uh, it's beginning to get close to being closed in. Uh, we anticipate that, uh, also being, uh, beginning to be dried in by, uh, March. And, uh, would be completed by, uh, the mid-part of July, uh, if they keep on track as they are now. Harmony, same type of thing, last month is pretty much steel framing, and now you have, it's pretty much close to being dried in. And so that's significant once again, because they, uh, on Tuesday, when I was there, they were delivering the sheet rock. They were scheduling to begin putting up some of the interior sheet rock this week. Uh, they will continue to move forward, uh, diligently as well. And so, as I said, they're pretty much right of being dried in now, so they, and they would be completed, uh, towards the beginning of July if, if their schedule hopes as it is now. Pecan Valley, uh, they got, uh, bu- behind a little bit due to weather. Uh, last month, they had made up some of that time and their steel was going up. Uh, this month, they have, uh, they have started putting up ex- exterior walls, uh, insulation and, uh, beyond the, uh, the roofing as well. Once again, they will be dried in by March and would be probably, uh, completed towards the end of July. Sinclair, uh, also in July, they had a whole lot of, uh, steel up, most of their steel was up, plus starting the, uh, exterior framing of walls. This month, they are, uh, probably by this time, certainly by next week, will be completely dried in. And they, I would anticipate the Sinclair addition to be completed and turned over to us, if not at the end of June, certainly towards the beginning of July, if things continue to go as they are now. Um, and then we have the annex, uh, that is currently under, uh, review and design. And ECDIS DC is also, uh, going to be, uh, looking at for design as well. I wanted to spend just really briefly, if you recall, one of the things I, I wanted to, to share with you during these presentations is the phasing, uh, that takes place, uh, with these different projects, uh, with the additions and renovations. So I was gonna highlight, uh, Pecan Valley for you this month. She doesn't show it. Sounds like from Mr. Technology. Sam, what am I, am I not holding my mouth right or what? Sam is Mr. Technology. So Pecan Valley, like the other projects, we're gonna have, uh, you're gonna have five different phases. And so you're gonna start off with, uh, to give you a little bit of an orientation, um, this is the new addition right here, this would be the front of the school, the parking lot in front of Pecan Valley. This is the new addition that's trying to be a new structure. So that, that should probably be turned over to us in July. But also while that is being completed, we're gonna start all this area in brown, this area right here. It's gonna begin to be, uh, totally renovated, uh, during the so- this summer. Along with the gymnasium, you'll have this addition to the back of the gym completed this summer as well. And so by the time the teachers get back, uh, the brown, both the area in green, which is the new addition, and the area in brown will be completed and will be able to occupy. During the beginning of the school year next year, we'll be focused on this area in yellow. And that will be also, the demolition will take place over the summer and during the fall, they will do renovations to that area. To help accommodate where those kids are going whenever all this is taking place, we're gonna have two portable's out here in the back, for the kids to go to that, that, uh, new addition to this space. And then in the, uh, uh, training of two thousand nineteen, you'll have the blue area being renovated, since it's to be completed. They'll move out of here and into these portable's, and they'll renovate the blue area. And then next summer, we'll renovate the purple area, the cafeteria and, uh, this new addition to the, the construction lot. And so once again, you can see that it's been being done in phases. We're gonna continue to have safe operations for all of our students and the staff and the community when they exist. And, uh, by summer two thousand nineteen, uh, we're doing, we'll be done and we'll be moving on.
What is that addition behind the gym?
Uh, the addition behind the gym is a restroom and a, uh, soda lab. They'll have restrooms and bathrooms.
Oh.
So both here and at, uh, uh, Sinclair, they're doing a small addition to the, the thing, uh, the major,